Okay, today is Tuesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, October 13th. We thank everyone for being here, whether they're here live, watching on Facebook, watching on live streaming, watching on Channel 6. We appreciate it. It's our second Town Hall meeting, and we're excited about having that today. Let me first have everyone introduce themselves, then we'll kind of go through how we like to run this, and what's gonna happen. Maggie, if you want, go ahead and start.
Maggie Jablonsky, Deputy Village Manager.
I'm Colby Basham, I'm the Public Works Director.
Jared Polony, Director of Community Development.
Christine Trump, Finance Director.
I'm Rich Michael, Fire Chief.
Chuck Wallace, Police Chief.
Matt Roan, Village Manager.
George Nickerback, Village Attorney.
Georgie! Trustees, if you want.
Tammy Miller.
Jeff Frankie.
Pat Feigler.
Sam Lister.
Chris Prochnow.
Steve Schmidt.
So, as we did with the last Town Hall meeting, you're free to ask anything, everything, whatever you want to. This is your chance to talk about what you like, don't like, wanna see changed, give us ideas, maybe modify things. You're free to ask anything you want. We don't ask you in advance what questions you have. We don't require you to submit anything to us in advance. This is your meeting. The reason we have everyone here is, in case we don't know, or don't have knowledge what you're talking about, maybe the Public Works Director would know, or the Chief would know. They're here to help. If we don't have an answer for you, we will take down, if you come up after the meeting, we'll take down your name and address, and we will get back to you. A lot of times, it's myself that'll call you back. And we do get back to everyone. I take great pride in that. We try to respond to you as quickly as we can with the information you're looking for. So, that's what it's meant for. The last one we did was in April of this year, and it was so well-received, we can't track Channel 6 numbers, but we can track people watching on streaming, is it? And Facebook, we can actually track numbers, and there are hundreds and hundreds of people watching that. And that's without counting the people that were here, and also people on Channel 6, which we cannot keep track of. So, we knew it was successful, people seemed to like it, we heard a lot of compliments, and so, we want to do it. The one thing we do ask is, please, show respect. We're all neighbors here, we're all friends here, we're all part of the same community. So, all we ask to do is, show respect. You may not agree with something someone said, that's fine. You know, a lot of people disagree with me all the time, that's life, that happens. But be respectful about it. And we're gonna give you our philosophy, we'll give you the reasons why we did something, you know, how come it happened? At the end of it, you may not like the answer, you may disagree with us, we may have to leave agreeing to disagree. But we don't have to be disagreeable. We also open up to people some questions in advance. Last time, I think we had 16? We had 16? This time, I think we've had four. So, that may be a good sign, that people don't have a lot of concerns, or whatever it is, but we'll answer those four questions over the course of this Town Hall tonight. So, that's how it's gonna run, and, you know, again, we're just gonna, when the second start by, first person raise your hand, we'll let, come on down. We've got a microphone, so Channel 6 can hear it, or streaming can hear it, and the people here can all hear your question. And so, it'll be set that way. The one thing I do want to talk about to start off tonight is, we just got a, and Tom, for the press, we got press leads for you. We got our final numbers on the gift card that we sent out to all the residents. I'm sure, I assume everyone here in Elk Grove got one, or the household got one. But that was quite an undertaking, to do that. First thing I want to say, and every board member agreed, this was not a gift from the village. This was your money going back to you. As this village does well, we feel we should give some of that back to you, if we can. If we can't give it back, we need it, we will keep it and use it. But if we don't need it, and we can give it back, we will. And we were able to give back almost $3 million back to the community. That's on top of the two water bill rebates we gave back. So, over the three of them in two years, we gave back close to $9 million. I know that's unusual for government to do it. Unlike the feds, we didn't print this money. Unlike some states or others, we didn't borrow it, we didn't get grants from the federal government to give it to you. This is your money, and as the village does well, we want to give it back. Real quick, I'll talk briefly. People say, "Well, why didn't you cut our taxes?" Well, understand, when you cut taxes, that's permanently done, unless you raise it up again. Giving money back allows us, when we have a good year, to give it back. If next year's not so good, we don't have to raise taxes to make up for it. That's why we do it. When we got it, we give it, if we don't have, we don't give it back. So, that's why we do that philosophy. Because if we gave you a tax cut, and next year we don't have a good year, we'd have to raise your taxes. We'd rather keep them as stable as we can. Now, recently, we talked, I think we talked a little bit last April on this, we had our first property tax increase, it'll be coming soon, in 14 years. And we did that because of earmarked projects we've done in Elk Grove. Road improvements, sidewalk curb improvements, and rear yard drainage. I'm sure everyone in this village has seen some sidewalk work, maybe not in front of your house, but going on in this village this year. Because we have done four times as much sidewalks than we've ever done in one year before. We're also doing way more yard drainage program than we've ever done before. We're resurfacing, we're doing streets, way more than we've done before. Because like every other town around us, that's about 60, 70 years old, we'll find out the streets, you know, they go along nice, nice, and they've just taken a drop. So, we're trying to catch up with it, keep it strong, and keep it going for perpetuity. So, this is not a one-year project, this is multiple year. So, by the time we go through them once, we go through again. Remember, I talked about this before? We actually had a company, went out there digitally, electronically, looked at every square inch of every street in Elk Grove. About 130 miles? About 130 mile street, am I correct, Colby? Every square inch of every street was analyzed, how the base is doing, how the top's doing, all the stuff and components, we've got that on record. So, what we're doing now with our work is, we're taking the most highly needed streets first, and working our way down. Same thing with sidewalks. We actually had people walk all hundred, no, maybe 200, and about 70 miles of sidewalk, because you've got both sides of the street, so it's double the streets. People actually walked every sidewalk in Elk Grove. So, we know where all cracks are, all lifts are, all the rest. And we're doing sections, on sidewalks, we're doing sections, the worst first, and go through. So, you may have yours coming, but it may not be for a year or two. And some, we did some temporary patchwork. You'll see, some areas, we put some asphalt to stop the trip hazard and all that. That's not permanent, that's temporary for safety, and then we'll be getting that sidewalk as soon as we can. I mean, no town I know, because I talk to them here all the time, no town I know has done that kind of analyst, analysis of the sidewalks and street. But we did. We also did a lot more analysis of rear yard drainages. We've got a list going there. We're spending millions on that, to fix that problem for people. They do a beautiful job, too. We see the pictures every week and stuff. So, that's going on. So, that's where that comes from. Again, we make sure we take care of it. Real quickly, as far as the village, the village is doing very well. The village is doing very well. We're very proud of that. And one reason we're doing so well is that business park. I know some people say, "Well, God, Mary, you talk about the business park, oh, good, good, good." Well, we should talk about it. Eighty-five cents of every dollar we get comes from that business park. Actually, it's growing. Used to be 81, 82, now it's 85, it's growing. That business park is a cash cow for the village, and that's great. We want that. But it's not just the village, it's the Park District, it's the library, it's the school districts, it's the county, it's the township. This is a huge tax-producing entity. Remember, our business park, largest in North America, none bigger. 5,500 businesses, over 60,000 employees, that's huge, and we're very proud of that. And we're staying on cutting edge. Just that one development, the WGN property up there, will generate for Elk Grove alone, when it's complete, over $3 million a year. High School District 211, $4 million a year. Grade School Elementary School 54, almost $3 million a year. Park District alone, over a half a million dollars a year, just from that one development. That's big bucks for these people. And again, minimal impact on the community, but great benefit for the community. And we've got these happening all over. I mentioned that night board meeting, Econo, no, what was the company, the data center expansion?
Edge Connects.
Just put in $50 million expansion, $50 million expansion. Village's permit fee, $500,000, just like that, half a million dollars. So, that's good for the village. Now, some people say, "Well, all you're talking about is..." That's not true. Residential side, most of sidewalks, almost all are residential. We're doing more streets by far in the residential side than the business park side. Even though the business park by size is bigger than the residential size, but we're putting more there. Anyone goes down by Meacham Road recently, saw that new big sidewalk, wider sidewalk? That's a multipath we're putting in. Got some nice grant money for that, for people who walk, bike safely along Meacham Road, down by 390, all the way toward Schaumburg area. That ties in to the multipath we just finished along Beast of Field Road, from Raleigh, Edge Connects all the way up to Upplum Grove Road. You know, these are multimillion-dollar projects we're doing, residential. The rear yard drainage, that's not in the industrial park, that's people's homes, residential. We put way more work in the residential side than we ever do on the business side. But, we want to make sure we take care of that business park, because that, as I said before, is a golden goose. How many remember Mayor Zetic? Remember Mayor Zetic? I'm an old timer, it's old time, remember? What Chuck used to always tell me, he goes, "Craig, every morning we wake up in Elk Grove, you look to the east toward that business park, and you bow three times." And that's true to this day, true to this day. So, again, we're excited about all that, we're doing well. Last thing I mentioned was those gift cards, which I started at. And we're very proud. We gave out over 14,000 gift cards. Think about that. We mailed out over 14,000 gift cards. And everyone knew it, we announced it, before it got to your mailbox, it was on TV, it was on the radio, it was in newspapers. And we're proud to say that, first off, we're doing all the work, especially Maggie Jablonsky over there, they did the instrumental work behind the scenes to get those cards out. That's quite a task, when you think about that, getting those out to people. And I give staff, all of our staff credit, and the board gives all of our staff credit. We come up with some cockamamie ideas sometimes, you know? I love thinking outside the box. I mean, let's be honest, no town's done something like this before, but they're the ones that make it happen. All these folks working here, they're the ones that make it happen. And what I'm proud to say tonight is, out of the 14,000 cards that went out, only 17 did not reach their destination. Seventeen out of 14,000, over 14,000. That's a huge success. Our biggest concern, Maggie tell you, was, okay, we're somebody walking down every street looking in the mailboxes, because we told them the cards are coming, looking to pluck them out. It didn't happen. It doesn't happen. This is Elk Grove. We take care of our neighbors and friends, we don't steal from them. But we're proud. But we did catch a person. So, how many was he, how many did he steal? Two of the 17 was stolen by an individual, he's already been charged with a felony. Our police do an absolute phenomenal job tracking this down. Please remember, in this world today, there's cameras everywhere, everywhere. You can't, don't even think about anything, someone's gonna catch you, whether it's ring doorbells, or cameras, we've got it installed, or businesses have installed, anything else. And they do a lot of good things. It helped us catch a guy that killed someone with a truck, and he was ready to leave the country, flee, camera by local businesses, we were able to catch him before. He was packed and ready to get out of the country, we caught him. And he's gonna now be held accountable for the, I don't know if you'd call it murder, I would call it murder, that he committed. We caught him because that, well, we caught this guy stealing a couple of cards. So, we hope you all enjoyed the cards, we hope you all used them, hopefully in Elk Grove Village. I know Jewel loves them, because every time I go there, they say, "Oh, Mayor, another cards came through, more cards coming through." That's great. So, it helps you, it helps our businesses, it's a win-win proposition. So, with that said, what we do now tonight is, as someone who wants to come up and speak to us, just raise your hand, you know, just state your name, for everyone knows who you are, if you wanted to say, "Hi, I'm Tom," that's fine, you're Tom. Come up, and you're free to ask us anything you want to, we're open to hear from you. So, who would like to start? Someone's gotta be first, come on.
I don't know, but I don't have a question, I have a real long statement.
Not too long, I hope.
Not too long.
Three minutes.
Do I get three minutes?
No. No, we're not like the school board. No, you're fine.
No, three.
Okay, my name is Nicole Kitzinger. I have lived in Elk Grove for about 13 years, and my husband's lived here longer, though, about 26, I think, if I'm doing my addition right. I have two kids in the District 59, so I'm here to talk about the school district tonight. Just more for information, I understand that the board here doesn't have a hand in anything, but I want to get the word out, and I just heard how great you guys do on Facebook, so I want to, you know?
I don't think we do that at all.
I want to get the word out, well...
We don't get involved in the village, or in the...
In the district.
In the district at all, so you know?
Yes.
The village will never back anything...
Absolutely.
Against another government entity in town.
Absolutely.
So, what you're just saying is what your opinion is.
Yes, sir. Yep. Okay, so, to start, I just want to thank Mayor Johnson and the trustees for allowing me to speak this evening. Again, I understand the district business is not something you have a hand in, but that the Town Hall is a great place to share things that are happening in our community. So, the Superintendent of District 59 and her team have come up with eight areas of focus to achieve equity and diversity within our district. These include access to programming, class size, demographics, enrollment, facility and capacity usage, resource allocation, transportation, and student outcomes. It's not lost on us that all of these topics are very important, however, when we look at how we got here from our former superintendent completely dismantling the curriculum, we see that as why our enrollment is down, and why a lot of 59 students are more than three grade levels behind currently. So, to achieve the aforementioned outcomes, the changes being proposed are school pairings. I'm not sure if anybody has seen, but we have been trying hard to get these flyers out around town, save our schools. We did a little rally the other day before the board meeting. So, school pairings are being proposed, and that would affect our Elk Grove schools that are Byrd, Clermont, Ruplee, and Salt Creek. So, instead of those schools being K through 5, they would be K-2, and then the other schools would be 3 to 5. So then, also, this would affect Ridge Family Center for Learning, not sure if you guys are aware of that school, but it is on a balanced calendar currently, so we are on fall break right now, which is fantastic. That school is looking to be closed with this proposition. It will be repurposed to a early learning center, which we already have one of in our district, and it's not even fully at capacity, so I don't know why they would want to open another one. So, these pairings would also put more kids on buses than we have now. Some students will have no other choice but to bus, because one of the schools in their pairings is too far from their home. So, us parents are concerned that with the curriculum still not up to par, that that is what needs to be the focus of this administration. After talking to other parents in the district, I see that some teachers are utilizing materials that aren't necessarily part of our curriculum, but are needed to teach our children foundational basic knowledge. So, for example, my kid brought home a transitional words document, that was like, therefore, however, all these different kinds of transitional words, and comparing that with another parent, their child was not given that, that document. So, it just shows what some teachers are going outside of the curriculum to teach the kids, and other teachers are following the curriculum to a T, which is what they're told to do. Grading and correcting students' mistakes is another thing that's fallen by the wayside. When comparing with other parents, some of their students' work comes home with spelling, grammatical errors, punctuation mark errors, things like that corrected, and other students are not getting those corrections. So, how are you supposed to know it's wrong if they're not correcting it? And then I did take a moment, too, to watch the Town Hall meeting today. I watched it from October 3, 2018, and Dr. Fessler was here, he was our former superintendent, and a, I believe she was a teacher, but not within this district, spoke on behalf of the parents and community against the curriculum being changed and all that with Dr. Fessler. Some common points from then that kind of coincide with now were home values and homes going up for sale. I know that people are moving out of this district, or choosing private schools rather than public schools because of the changes already. I know of four families already who have moved their kids this past summer, or this current school year, out of this district, so that they don't have to deal with the changes that are coming, and the poor curriculum as well, that is still a major factor. There are some families to, I'm sorry, that are just so concerned that the curriculum has been put on the back burner. So, it was brought up in 2018 also, that you don't get 20 to 50 people to show up at a Board of Education meeting, because the community is pleased with the job being done, right? People show up when there's an issue, okay? So, we had a nice gathering, a rally, earlier this week on Monday, right before the meeting, and I'd say we had about 25 people there, it was a pretty good rally. And I'm hoping that this will get the word out, and more people will come to our next one. So, I also, today, had a Ruplee staff member mention to me that they were told by office staff that parents were the ones making this decision, and I just want to make it put out there that the Board of Education is the ones that are voting on this issue at hand. I think, other than that, so the bottom line, I guess, for me is, just that the superintendent is kind of making this a short-sighted decision, in getting rid of our neighborhood schools. The busing has yet to be fully explained, as well as the school start and end times, and they want to vote on this in December from our Board of Education. And I'm hoping that getting the word out this way will help more people have an understanding of the changes being proposed, and that they could ask questions to the Board of Education if they hear me talking about this today. Also, if anybody in our audience wants a flyer, I have a lot of them, okay? So, you can come see me, and also, you can contact me on Facebook, or talk to me after the meeting, and I'm so happy to talk to anybody who would like to hear more information about this issue. Thank you for your time.
Nicole, thank you, thank you very much. And again, as trustee Frankie said, exactly right, we can act as a board and reject ourselves in local governments, but individually, we will do stuff. And as grandfather of five kids in 59, you hear me talk about this, not tonight, but other times. But I appreciate, Nicole, because schools affect all of us, and so, I told people before, make sure you stay up to date on this. So, thank you for coming tonight, you did a very nice proof job, you did a good job.
She did.
Was that good?
Yeah, I thought so.
Okay. You're fine, thank you. Okay, Nicole broke the ice, so who would like to come up next? Sir, come on down, please. You see, Nicole, we didn't have a timer, did we?
No, no timers, no pressure.
Rick Paterola, been in Elk Grove since 1984, and I just had a few questions, I'll ask them, and then go sit down. First one is, drive-through communities, you'll see signs that say, "Engine braking prohibited." And I live close to 390, and that's kind of a big noise pollution problem. Now, the truckers probably aren't gonna care that there's a sign, but do we approach the state for those signs, or is that the village, or what?
Good point. Stay up here, Rick, don't sit down, hang on. Chief, you talk about 390, he was talking about. What is that, does anybody know what he, I've seen those signs before.
Engine braking is?
Yeah, what does that mean?
They're downshifting or whatever, and that's slowing down, but it's loud.
Okay, and there's ways to avoid that, or?
Well...
Can you prohibit that? I mean, is that allowed?
Which they don't want to do.
It's considered a noise complaint, easily definitely be regulated by the state police on the highway.
So, we would need to reach out to the, so what we'll do is, we'll reach out, I'll send a formal letter to the state, I think they oversee, that's tollway 390.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's on a tollway.
Yeah, but nobody really stops like that on a tollway.
Well, but we can put a sign up, maybe...
The ramps, when they get off at Meacham, yeah, when they come down the ramp.
Okay. Well, we'll reach out to them, and we'll make sure they're aware of it. We have good influence, Illinois State Police work phenomenal with Chief Walsh, they've been great with us when we work on the migrant thing, so, and District 15 oversees those roads. So, I know that when I was on the tollway board. So, we'll reach out to them, try to reach Commander Meter, who's in charge of that division, and we'll see if we can get signs up, and see if they can enforce it for us.
Okay.
Thank you, we were not aware of it, so thank you for bringing that to us.
And is there a program in Elk Grove to trim the parkway trees? Because some of them, you know, like I've been here for 38 years, and some of them have never been trimmed, and they get pretty, pretty overgrown.
Well, they should be trimmed, on a, we have rotation bases, all trees getting trimmed. What street are you looking at in particular?
Judy Drive.
Judy Drive. We'll make sure we check on that, if I don't go down, we'll also check to see when's the last thing they did trim it.
Okay.
If they skipped it, we'll find out why, and they don't want to hear from us if they're not doing their job.
Okay.
Because they want to get paychecks from the village. Not, we don't do it internally, it's done, we hire companies out. So, that company wants to keep doing work in Elk Grove, they're gonna do the job right.
Okay. Last question is, is there an ordinance or anything that, I mean, I know they can't give tickets, but to keep the trash containers, like, you know, some people just bring them up by their garage door and leave them there all week.
Trash containers are supposed to be kept behind the front of the house, they can be on the side, they're not supposed to be kept in front of the house. Am I correct, Jared? Right? Yeah. So, if people have them in front, what we do is, we do have housing inspectors, one or two, we have housing inspectors, two. So, they drive around, and they're the ones that, some people get mad, because they may give you a warning about peeling paint, or your grass, or something like that, but they do go around, we'll make sure, Jared's gonna make sure that they know to check that. What we do is give a friendly note at first, just to remind, hey, you know, garbage can is supposed to be kept behind the front of your house, it can be on the side of your house, or in the back, or whatever, but it can't be kept in front of your house, after garbage pickup. We'll give them a friendly note of that, and we'll take care of it. If you tell us the street, not the house number, but a street, we'll make sure we check it on those days.
Okay, great, thanks for your time.
Do you have a street in particular you want us to look at, or? Okay, just generally?
Not on air.
Okay, we'll, we'll look around. You know, obviously Judy Drive's important, so check that, check that area. We got you covered, sir. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address us tonight?
Not after that.
No, he's good, he's good. Anybody else? Sir, please come on down.
I sent you an email a few weeks ago, and your admin responded back and suggested I come tonight.
Okay, great.
So, my question is to the police chief, and yourself, I'd like to thank this board and yourself for always providing good guidance in the village for the people who live here. We've lived here for a long time, raised the kids here, all went to school, we're still, we're still here. But there's something coming up in January that is rather inflammatory, but I want to talk about what's not the inflammatory part of it. And this is the Safety Act, because there's a lot of things in there that impact us on a daily basis, or could, the regular people here. Things like the trespassers. Now, right now, we don't have that problem, but as we experienced during the riots, and people would come and demonstrate, right, and our village kind of said, "Hey, come on in," and talk to us, and nobody showed, right? But you never know, there's a lot of weird people out here who just want to make a statement. And we've got some small businesses that could be impacted by this, too. So, what kind of recommendations do you have for us? Just simple things to, if someone, is it true, can you clarify some of this, is it true that if a person comes onto your property, and you don't want them there, and you'd like them to leave, you know, they're trespassing, they weren't invited, they just decide to plop on down, or maybe in your car, or in your business, that the police can no longer come in and physically remove them, they can only issue them a citation? And we're stuck dealing with this. And if that's true, what should we do? How do we get these people off our, our, our property? Out of our cars? Because that could happen just sitting at Walmart, right? Somebody pops in and says, "Hi, how you doing? I'm not gonna hurt you, but I'm not gonna get out of your car," just to make these I'm not going to hurt you, but I'm not going to get out of your car, just to make these statements. Is this true? That's what I've been, been hearing and reading underneath. Uh, and what do we do? Does this mean that we're going to have to shut our doors and lock our doors? Because right now, you know, we lock our screens. But we don't have to do that. We can leave our garage doors open and we can play with our kids down the street and not worry about things, not worry about all this. Because this is Elk Grove. But January first...
It's going to change. What the, Mr. Wise is talking about, there's a new law going into effect on January first of, uh, twenty twenty-three. It's called the Safety Act law. And it does, he's exactly right, does diminish a lot of authority, a lot of oversight. It's the, most people know it's the cashless bail law goes into effect. And what that is, is the state of Illinois, and it's empty of wisdom, decided to change the rules as far as that goes. Some of the examples are, I think, up to second-degree murder. Up to second-degree murder is now a cashless, um, law. In other words, you commit or charged for second-degree murder, you can basically just walk out without a post bond or cash, you know, cash bail. And, um, the thing Mr. Wise is talking about is one of the provisions in there is that no longer can police physically come in and arrest and take, I believe I'm talking right, someone that comes to your garage is open. Let's be honest, we all leave our garage open. On weekends, you run in and out, you run up to, uh, you know, uh, Home Depot to get some, you leave, you don't think about it. Some of us don't lock our doors a lot, unfortunately, nights and everything like that. But supposedly, under the law, someone could just walk in and sit down. Now, I'll let Chief answer in a second. Um, what can be done and can't be done, we'll talk a little more about what you can do personally. But understand this, that law is on the books, but the state is looking to modify a lot of, a lot of provisions. We're part of Northwest Municipal Conference. That's a conglomerate of fifty government agencies, mostly mayors of towns. We have townships in there and stuff like that. And we are very heavily working on getting the state to modify a lot of the stance involved in that. And our state legislators agree when we talk to them. We got some good ones, especially Laura Murphy, our state senator, phenomenal. Right now Marty Boylen, state rep, Michelle Mossman. We got good people working for us. But a lot of these need to be changed because Mr. Wise is right. Depending on how you interpret it, and there's some vagueness in that law, I mean, it's kind of scary if you think about it, exactly right. You come out of your garage, out of your house, you went in for lunch, come out to finish cutting your grass, and there's some guy you never met before just sitting in your garage. You know? My first guy, you say, hey, hi, do I know you? And the guy probably look at you like, you know? And I don't blame people for being nervous on that. So Chief, what can be done? Uh, we're talking that one case particular on the trespassing.
First of all, thank Mr. Wise for the kind words for the police department. I'll share that with the many women. Secondly, um, that is...
He took his microphone away.
Fire chief, fire chief stole the mic for me, so. Uh, again, Mr. Wise, thank you for your comments. So that is true. If someone is trespassing on your property, uh, and the police will show up, if you sign a complaint, we can handcuff them and get them out of there and, and make an arrest. But if you don't sign a complaint, then that's kind of what the new law is, that we can pretty much say, here's a ticket, if you show up to court, great. Um, and the Illinois Chiefs of Police, which I'm part of, are working on a third trailer bill to get a little bit more teeth behind that. But, so if someone does show up in your garage, sitting on your lawn, you call the police, still call us, we'll come out there. Uh, you know, some of this is homelessness issues as well, and the board in the last several, uh, months has, uh, increased our, um, our budget to handle or help, uh, homeless folks. So that's, that's a good thing too. So we're working on it on a couple different levels. But yes, if someone shows up, you want them gone, still call nine-one-one, we will come there, uh, we'll get them to go someplace else. And if you sign a complaint, absolutely, we'll still arrest people.
But again, um, Chief said a good point. Our police officers know how to talk to people and they seem to be very persuasive and get them to do things. So, um, we feel confident we'll be able to move on. But Chief is right, um, this village, you know, we don't talk a lot of things. We do. I mean, we're proud of it, we should probably talk more, but we do. We've increased funding to help the homeless situation. Because, believe it or not, we have homeless people here in Elk Grove. I mean, you may have seen them. Um, there's one gentleman by the park, just look, all, he's, Trustee Frankie's smiling, all the time. Um, actually, I helped him with money for Christmas Eve to go to a hotel one night a couple of years ago, um, trying to help him do good. But, so we do do stuff like that. We just did our green initiative the other night that, uh, Maggie Jawlinski worked hard on. Um, we're shocked how much green initiatives we've done. We didn't realize that until you sat down and filled out the forms. So, but again, you do have a right, as the chief said, if you find, sign a complaint, they will arrest the gentleman or woman and take them away. So you still are protected that way. Um, but I feel pretty confident that our officers will be able to talk, sense into these people's minds and get them going. But you, it's not like they can stay no matter what. You can't sign a complaint and they can still arrest. What other, was there another issue on the law you?
It was, well, my wife tells me less is better. So at that point, I'm going to listen to my wife.
Smart man.
Bless your heart.
But thank you, thank you all, and, uh, thanks for the, the police have always been there. And you're right, they speak to the people a lot better than we do. The emotions aren't there.
Exactly.
Right? And, you know, everybody gets all blistering and things, and that's when bad things happen and can get out of hand a lot easier. Why not call the professionals and they come?
And they're homeless? We've got the funding to help now. The police also take them, we're not going to be mean to people. We're going to take them to a place to give them some housing. Uh, we got funds available to help with that. Uh, we're very excited. As I said, if the village does well, we can expand the services we do, and we're doing that to make it better. So, but again, if you ever feel on anything concerned, don't hesitate to call the police. E, don't be embarrassed if it turns out not to be what you think. We'd rather you be safe and comfortable than always looking over the back of your shoulder. So we're here for it. Our police, I told you, Elk Grove since ever, we back them a thousand percent. Our cops do a phenomenal job, both the men and women. We're, that's why we're credited, nationally credited for decades. Chief, uh, Trustee Schmidt was the chief at the time, got his first national credit. We're one of the best police departments in the world. We got back into show it, but we know that, we've lived here, we don't need someone to tell us, we know that. So thank you, Mr. Wise, we appreciate it. Yes, sir, please.
My name is Harry. I've lived in this community for a year and a half. I want to thank all of you. Uh, seriously, this is a great place to, to live. So thanks, thanks for making this a nice place to live.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Trustee Frankie, how much did you pay him?
Do you know those lost gift cards? He got one of them.
I appreciate them. Yes, ma'am. Please, come on up.
Hi, Emily Hartnell. I just moved here in July.
You can bend that down.
I can bend it down, okay. I just moved here in July. This is quite a community. I have a good friend who's lived here for fifty years. Um, just one quick question. The Veterans Memorial, um, on Beister, Feisterfield or Beisterfield, however you pronounce that, and Wellington, um, what is the status of the work on that and when do you plan to get it completed?
Well, um, let me first explain what's going on with that. That memorial was built about twenty-two years ago.
Yeah.
And it was part of our residential enhancement.
It's a redo, I understand, yeah.
So what happened though, one of the biggest concerns, we had a couple of things happen. If you notice by a clock tower, we had those trees at one time around it. They're beautiful, nice birch, gorgeous. Problem is roots do damage to concrete. Concrete and roots don't get along. So, and our brick wall, so we took them out, did all that work, fixed up. We're having some of that problem over there. The other big problem we had from day one, and we didn't put together, is the Veterans Memorial is visited a lot of times by our veterans. And a lot of our veterans are older, and it's not easy to park over there. And for years, they said, you know, Craig, you do a nice job, we love the park, but you didn't think of us. We have to walk there, some of us have walkers, some of us have oxygen. So, so including this new one, is some parking spaces to help the veterans go and enjoy the place that they're proud of. These, our veterans are very proud. So what happened is we started the plan. It was going to be built one year before this year, but because of COVID and construction stuff was slowed, and so I'm getting your answer. I always want to know the whole story. Um, so now we got the project going. And you notice that gentleman, the second from right next to Maggie there, the one that's got beads of sweat on his head right now? It is to be done for this year, November eleventh. It is to be done, this is November. Our most critical day coming up is the twenty-fourth, Monday, the twenty-fourth of October, because that's the day that the final concrete pour is supposed to be done. The problem we've had like everybody else is, if you remember, there's a strike going on for about two months. That stopped all deliveries of stone, gravel, which affects asphalt, affects concrete, everything else. We've been very fortunate. All of our projects are getting done, except for a street by Claremont School and Ridge School, because we won't do them during the school year. And, um, Nurgie Road was delayed one year. But all, we're getting all of our S R work done, and that slowed us down a bit. It should have been done by now, yes. But Kobe feels very confident it will be done. You might see him out there with bags of sack tree, pouring them in on the twenty-fifth, but we feel confident it will be done. We're working with, uh, VFW, because we're going to do a celebration of that day, the November eleventh. So short answer, Veterans Day this year, it...
Thank you.
Veterans Day this year, Kobe, it will be?
It'll be done.
All right.
There's your answer. Thank you, ma'am, very much. Look forward to seeing you that day. If you want to be there, uh, ten forty-five will start right there at the Veterans Park.
I walk there all the time, so, yeah.
We're going to enjoy it, it's going to be much nicer. And the new, new thing we're doing, as far as we can tell, we're the first town in this country, as far as we know now, we're the first town in this country that's going to have all six branches of military service. We're going to include Space Force. No one else has done a new memorial, anything that includes all of them that way. So we're excited. Again, Elk Grove leads the pack in things. We're hoping to lead the pack in that. So we're going to have that. Space Force is coming.
I'm so proud.
Thank you for moving here.
Yeah, can I ask, where'd you move from, ma'am? Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Where'd you move here from?
I moved from Evanston.
Oh, that's a great town, one of our favorite suburbs.
Oh, it is. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, this is, yeah, and it's, anyway. I'm glad to be here.
So you came too from Evanston? Yeah.
I moved from Lake Park, Chicago.
Okay.
Which is a great place. I mean, I'm actually kind of a city person, so the fact that I'm happy in the suburbs out here, you're doing a real good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're welcome, we're glad to have you here. Um, we had the gentleman, I think Mr. Wise, he said fifty years? Where's Mr. Wise? Fifty years in Elk Grove?
No, we, uh...
Eighty-four, I think he said.
Oh, eighty-four. You moved in. Okay. Who is, you're? You're, how many years you been here?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. See, we have shoes older than you folks in Elk Grove here. So we welcome you as newcomers, so thank you. We jokingly say that because all of us, most of us, we're born and raised here. I was nineteen sixty, um...
Fifty-nine.
I won't say the years, I won't, that's fine.
Fifty-six.
So all you other folks, we consider newcomers, so we welcome you to Elk Grove.
We see my heart in buggy.
See, you're newcomers. We welcome you to Elk Grove.
This is our first time, so this is exciting. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here.
Fire hydrants, I'm so glad they're painted nicely.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we made, we made a prediction, we made a prediction to the villa, uh, to the staff. When those white ones were first painted, we said we're going to get more questions, more phone calls, more emails, whatever. Why are we going white? Why are they white? So unfortunately, our newsletter was a little slow getting out. We explained that was primer. Now, I myself, I kind of like the white. It really stood out, you couldn't miss it against the green grass. Whereas my trustees are right, they said, Mayor, that's fine, except when it snows, then you won't see it. Nothing's ever red, the grass, the snow, so, but yeah, they're back to red now, so. But those guys, I watched them, they did a nice job. How they came out, they blasted it first, they put the primer, and then they came back. That truck they drove looked like it was about five, five thousand years old, but they did a nice job, those guys, you got to give them credit. Any other, next question, please, anybody? Yes, come on down, please. Now, hang on.
I was going to say...
Bulldogs, Bulldogs.
Bulldogs.
Sure.
Sure's.
My dad went to Sure's High School.
All right.
Your Sure's?
And today's our homecoming game.
Yeah, my dad, my dad went to Sure's High School way back, he's passed away. You would have gone back in the early forties. And his famous, I'm not sure it was with you ladies, but probably not you. Back then, when you swam?
Swam naked.
Naked.
Oh, that was...
Lane town.
Swam naked. So at Sure's High, that's what he talked, Sure's High School, you swam naked. Now, it was only boys, and then the girls had their own class, so we know none of that. But yeah, he always said, you guys don't know how lucky you are. We had to swim naked, so. And that's my story about Sure's.
Aren't you so glad you came not wearing that?
Go. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Suayapa Garcia, and I've been here about four years now. So I have a big ask, uh, so I don't, I apologize in advance.
Oh, ask.
Now, we all know the uptake on catalytic converters. And I'm aware of some aldermen in the city that they had a spray painting event to sort of mark them, to make them more identifiable when they're stolen. Does the village or the board or anyone have planned or an idea of doing something like that here?
We have not. Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, if you get our Neighborhood Watch newsletter, there's an article in there. If not, I can give you how to get that. Um, so when you spray paint that catalytic converter...
How about now?
Start over again.
Hello. Okay, so first of all, there's an article in our newsletter about catalytic converters, and if you're not on the newsletter, it can get you hooked up with that. Secondly, a lot of communities are spray painting, um, the catalytic converters, but they're still getting stolen, right? It's just, they're melting them down. But we just found a new system, it's a little like alarm that clips on the catalytic converter, so when someone's monkeying with it, it sends out a beeping thing, and, like a, like, almost like a little car alarm. And that's had a lot better success in kind of scaring those folks off, it's a loud, a loud alarm. And they're relatively cheap, so we're looking at trying to get some of those, test them, and then we'll make them available to the public. Because that catalytic converter theft's all over the nation, and those folks that are taking them are pretty dangerous, so. You know, we tell anybody, if you hear a ZOS saw in the middle of the night, or someone monkeying with the car, don't confront them, call nine-one-one, and we'll take care of it, because they are pretty dangerous folks.
So right now, you suggest to wait for the alarm, because that's more effective than just putting paint on it?
They'll still steal it.
They'll still steal it, it's just, they'll be stealing a red colored paint one or a blue one, and, and the people that are recycling those, they don't care what color they are.
Isn't it the pieces inside?
Correct.
So, once the, it's the special metal inside the catalytic converter, so...
That's worth the money.
They're just ripping the thing apart on the outside and taking that out, so, paint on it, because they're not going to a car dealer and say, hey, I found this on the road, you know? So, it, it's not gonna stop them from stealing it.
So, pretty soon, we'll have, do you have any idea about what they cost?
Skokie just did that, about thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars each?
Skokie is out, they did two hundred of them today.
Right.
And some mechanic in town volunteered to put them on for free.
Good, great. Well, then, now we have it coming, all this. We'll get, we'll get more information from Chief, and we'll put this in our newsletter, we'll put it on our website, we'll put it on Facebook itself. So once you get all the details on it, and if we can talk to a car person, so, we'll look at how we can do it, and we'll see if the village can help, partner with maybe some of the expense, and see if we can put together a program for any resident that wants it. Let's see what we can do to try and make it work. And, trustee Frankie's right, paint on it does nothing, then it's not gonna deter, we're still gonna take it, you know? And, like trustee Frankie said, trust me, the people that are breaking them down and giving cash for it, they could care less. They don't care if it's stolen or not, it's all money to them. And, Chief brought up a very good point, we talked about the arrest we made here in Elk Grove recently. Folks, as much as we think Elk Grove, we're like other towns too, as safe as you think it is, if you ever see someone, if you ever hear someone by your car, please, please do not confront them. Call the police, stay in your house. We had pictures, I showed it to the public, when we chased those three guys down, they hit a rock, two guys got away, we caught one. That guy had five guns, with the extended clips in each one. So, these guys are not people you wanna confront, you don't wanna work with. And again, it's not Elk Grove, it's everywhere. It's like a plague going. So, our hope is, the more we can catch them, that's why these alarms are good, because our goal is, we wanna catch them. We don't want them getting away, we wanna catch them. Because faster you catch them, faster you get them off the street, well, who knows though with that new safety act, they may be back on the street tomorrow. But, our goal is to try and take care of that as quick as we can, so, we'll let you know, afterwards it's done, come up after we're done, give Chief your name and address, phone number, we'll contact you personally. Rest of you folks, watch the newsletters, watch our website, we'll keep you updated when this program gets going, and what we're gonna do to help make it work in Elk Grove. That, we'll get the, we're gonna get the official...
Yes, it is in Elk Grove. It takes them about, less than five minutes to steal it. And, and like, like George had said, my goal is to see if I can find a local insurance agent to help me pay for some of the costs on those things.
Are there any good ones in Elk Grove?
I don't know if there's any good ones, but, we will find a way, we'll find a way to make it better for you folks too. So again, we're doing well in the village, this is a way we can try to help things. So, we'll make sure you stay on top of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And go Shurs, as long as you don't play Elk Grove.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Any other, next, Shur, come on down. And so, wasn't there a gentleman back there? Did you, okay, we'll get you, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Brian Margulis, and first let me say also, this is an exceptional town, and we're very, very appreciative of everything that this board does. But my question is...
That's fine, that's fine.
And I'm not sure if this is the proper form or not, but, we live on Deborah Lane, right behind Johnson Park, no relation to you, sir, but, it is Johnson Park. And we recently received postcards that said that they were taking a, a survey, and questioning if, the idea of flipping the park, the baseball field, to the other side, because of the drainage that's there?
That would not be the village, that would probably have been the park district.
Yeah.
And their, their own entity, and I'm not, I haven't heard about it, is that true that they, we don't know if they did it or not?
Is it the baseball diamond right next to the house that, on the curb?
Yes, yeah. With the dog?
Yeah, everybody knows the house. No, 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 remember, Coachy.
Well, we didn't want it to be flipped, because someone on the inside argued more for it to be flipped.
What I would suggest you do, is reach out to the park district, Ben Kerseo is the director, or Tom Cook is the president of the board. Reach out to them, we're not, I'm not, this is the first I've heard, anybody else hear about this?
Not heard about the card, no.
Anybody in the audience? You got one? Okay, so it's obviously out there, which is good, they're trying to get people's feedback, which, I like that in government, that's what we wanna do. So I would reach out to the park district, and ask them, yep, is this real? And ask them, are they gonna be discussing this at a meeting? The meetings are public like ours are, if they are, find out what date is it, so I can come and hear and express my view. So that's what I would do right away. They meet on Thursday nights, I think the second and fourth Thursday of the month, they're Thursdays. Reach out to them, and I know they'll get back to you, I mean, if there's a problem still, reach out to us, or reach out to me, but I don't think you have a problem. Try Ben Kerseo, or Tom Cook. Tom's the president, Ben's the director, I guarantee one of them will get back to you.
Yeah, we weren't sure if this was the right forum or not.
Oh, no, it's, it's fine.
But we appreciate that, and if we don't get the answers that we like, we're gonna come.
Reach back to us. Again, Sir, I gotta take care of my park, you know, it's Johnson, I gotta make sure we take care of it.
That's why I stress Johnson.
Sir, you want it, please?
Isn't there a swamp?
Oh, no, alligators.
My name's Randy Urbachi, thirty year, so I'm, I'm a baby, so. Just a question on, I read the article about, I know that the, I don't know if you want, I've, I've heard them referred to as illegal aliens, immigrants, that came to La Quinta, right? And I, and I understand that the village didn't even know about this, until like, that day, or like, late today. But i- is there, so I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, number one, what's the status of these people? Like, where are they at? Number two, is there a chance that this could happen again to Elk Grove? And number three, if so, do we have a plan? You know, do we have to, I mean, what do we do?
Well, where we stand on that, and I'll try to go through briefly, but, you know, it's something. We had, they called us on a Friday afternoon about one-thirty, and said, we've got a busload of migrants coming to Elk Grove. So our first question was, okay, how many? We don't know. Where are they going? We don't know. How long are they gonna be here? We don't know. What time? We don't know. Well, we hope you can let us know. And then about five o'clock, Mr. Rome and Chief Walsh, we spent a long night that night together. About five o'clock, they reached back out to us, and said, okay Mayor, we know what's going on, it's a bus of about ninety migrants, they're going to La Quinta Inn, and they should be getting there about six-thirty. So he said, okay, what about some of our safety concerns? One, have they had any kind of background checks done? Two, what about health screening? Has that been done? Remember, we are sworn up, hold and protect the health, safety, welfare of this community. Those are legitimate questions for people that have come into this country, they normally go through that, since these people did not arrive legally, but they claim asylum status, so they are legal in this country, so they have some protection that way. But, we wanna make sure they got through the normal screening that happens to anybody, anybody that comes in this country. And they said, well, we don't have answers for you on those two questions. I said, well, that puts us in a little concern, but I'll tell you what we'll do, is when the bus arrives, I will be out there, our police chief will be out there, we'll have some police officers there, we're gonna have them stay on the bus, we will get them water, and I said, there's a McDonald's across the street, I will personally go across the street, and get them whatever meal they each would like, until we get those questions answered. We feel that's critical to know that, for the safety of this community. And so, they said, we'll get back to you, Mayor. And about a half hour later, they called back and said, Mayor, the bus won't be coming today, it'll be coming tomorrow. I said, okay, what about my question, Mayor? We've arranged for a phone call, for you to have tonight, at eight o'clock, now this is a Friday night, eight o'clock, and you will have high ranking official for Homeland Security, FEMA, there's like two or three other departments. Yeah, two, and someone from the governor's office that works with Homeland Security. We said, great. So, Chief Walsh, Mr. Rome, our manager, and I, eight o'clock Friday night, we had a conference call. It was impressive. The gentleman we had from Homeland Security was like one of the top ranking, he was in charge of the whole southwest region, over by Mexico, the entire Mexican border, he was, he did most of the talking, and then the other one was there. And he explained to us, what happened, Mayor, they all go through El Paso, Texas, they're from Venezuela, and they've all been biometrically checked, security wise. That's advanced checking, eye imaging, fingerprints, DNA, all that stuff, to check any history of. So it's about as safety oriented as you can get. Then health screening, they test for COVID, monkey pox, they check with doctors, nurses, the bodies, looking for any kind of rashes, anything like that. And then when they come to Chicago, they go through a check again, health screening. So he said, okay, you've now alleviated our fears, I mean, we'll allow them to come to La Quinta tomorrow. They then said, well Mayor, please, we understand you're kind of concerned, don't get upset with us, if you're upset, blame Governor Abbott. And I said, in all due respect, folks, Governor Abbott has no clue where Elk Grove Village is, unless he watches the Bahamas Bowl, he doesn't even ever heard of Elk Grove Village. And, actually, I said, don't get us involved in national politics, we don't wanna be part of it. So what happened was, they went there, and then when they came to Elk Grove the next day, they came on CTA buses, Chicago Transit Authority. Well, only Chicago controls CTA buses. So, I was a little disappointed that Mayor Lightfoot did not reach out to us. Mayors have a great working relationship. And, I had heard her the other night, upset, that Governor Abbott had sent people to Chicago without giving her advance notice. Well, I wasn't too happy that Chicago sent people to Elk Grove without advance notice. And, so, she must've saw the newscast, because Sunday about noon, Lori called me. And, I'll tell you, phenomenal talking to her. We probably talked for forty-five minutes, we got along great, we joked, we got information, and basically, she said, she goes, Craig, I'm as frustrated as you are, it's the state that was running this whole process, not even Chicago. The state commandeered the buses, the state did everything. She had no knowledge either. And I said, well, I said, Lori, mayors can get a lot of things done, we should run the world, because without senators and presidents, we get things done, mayors. Because we care about our communities. And she laughed about that and all that, so, it went very well. And I'll tell you something, I know we see her on TV all this, when you talk to and get to know her and stuff, she's a phenomenally nice person, she's great to work with. I got a whole different respect for her than I had before. And, so, you know, that all went well, so again, it was the state. Now, we've still was frustrated with the state, we'd ask questions, well, where are they gonna go, how long are they gonna be here? Matter of fact, Chief Walsh and I went out there, out there, Mr. Rome and I went out there. What we were misled on originally was, they told us it was gonna be families. Ninety people showed up, eighty-one single men aged about twenty to thirty-five, seven single women, one woman that was pregnant, and one two-year-old child. That was it, no families, it was mostly individual singles. Now, the great thing about Elk Grove Village, we saw Elk Grove always at its best. We had dozens and dozens of families wanting to volunteer, to donate stuff to help them, anyway they can. I had businesses calling me, calling my staff and everything, they have jobs. Because according to the president, when he announced all this, he said, they have legal status, and they should have job visas, they can work. Well, we said, hey, we got, you know, with the biggest business park, we got hundreds and thousands of jobs, a lot of them use Spanish language, so they could communicate well with them, we'll give them jobs, we wanna set a table up inside the hotel, and we'll bring businesses in and line them up right away. That's, if they're a man in America, get them acclimated, get them in the process, we're behind that, and we'll volunteer stuff to help them. We could get no answers. We call, oh, that's not me, who'd we call? This person, they call. Ms. Jablonsky over there, made numerous calls to lady that supposedly was in charge, she never called back, never responded back. Mr. Rome, oh, matter of fact, the biggest upset we had was, the day Chief Walsh and I went out there, all of a sudden, a few days later, the National Guard showed up. We had men walking around the hotel in fatigues, the National Guard. Now, how the law works is this way, in Elk Grove, I am the only person that is allowed to request the National Guard to be in Elk Grove, only one. The governor is the only one in the state that can override, declare a state emergency, and he's allowed to deploy National Guard wherever he wants. But, the way the law's written, I was supposed to have been notified. We were never notified. So, Chief Walsh and I went out there, we met with the commanding woman in charge, we detailed there, and we asked her straight up, what are you doing here? Well, we've been deployed. Okay, are you here for safety? No. Are you here for health purposes? No. Are you here for logistics to move them around? No. What are you here for? Well, they say we have stuff to do. They may do some data entry, but they weren't doing data entry, the state was doing it. So, that's how this whole thing was going. Luckily, about a week later, we had a phone call with some people from the state, that Ms. Jablonsky arranged, luckily she knows people, and it helps. And, we now have a contact person there. We haven't got much information, so it's back to your answer, we don't know how many are still there, we don't know if new ones may be coming, or not. We're not being informed. My gut feeling is, they're not coming back to Elk Grove. The good feeling is, we made enough of a stink, if you've read the paper lately, Displayings had some brought to recently, they had one week's notice, they were told who's coming, where they're going, all that. Prospect Heights, there's another story, I try to believe the papers, they had two to three days' notice. So hope is, we raised enough a stink, myself and the mayor of Burr Ridge, that now the state's at least trying to work with us. Because as we said all along, we're not here to decide a federal issue, that's above our pay grade. But, if you're gonna use our community, work with the community, let us know what's going on, let us make sure we can assure our residents what's going on. And, you know, but to this point, we don't know. So, we'll see what happens. Now, also, I gotta be perfectly honest, to this point, it's cost us nothing. It's cost this village absolutely nothing. The state police have been phenomenal, phenomenal, District fifteen, I talked about earlier, they've been working with Chief Walsh, they've been providing security, safety checks they call it, the state has been providing the meals, and all the rest. So, it has not been a drain on our village one iota. We'd like to get them jobs, if we could, we have people need jobs filled. What, you know, if they're gonna be here, put them to work, let them work, that's good, they become productive part of society, nothing wrong with that. But, we can't get that connection. So at least, right now, they could, I guess, come more, we have not received more that we're aware of. Some we know are gone, that's one message to tell you. Show you how sad this world is. When we went out there, Mr. Rome, the chief, and I went out about five fifteen, five thirty that Friday night, we go in front of La Quinta there, we pull up, I told Chief, I said, Chief, I've been in my whole life, I've never seen so many cars in that parking lot. Why is there so many cars? And, we couldn't figure out, so we went inside there, we met the owner, Sonny Patel, and I said, Sonny, do you have room for the migrants coming? He goes, oh yeah. I said, well, I've never seen so many cars, you gotta be booked. He goes, oh no, those people are sitting out there forever. I said, what? They're sitting out there. So I said, Chief, go do your investigation work, find out what's going on. Up there, and he talked to them, he said, oh, we're here to pick up the migrants. There's cars from Ohio, Michigan, Virginia, from Virginia. So how would these people in these cars know, had to be hours, if not a day or so, before we found out that they were coming here? But they were there, to pick them up. So, so a lot of them did, and we told the state that during a conversation that night, I told the state, I said, just so you folks know, there's people picking these migrants up when they get off the bus and they're gone. Oh, we know that. I said, well, don't you have to, oh no, we want them to get out of the population. I said, okay, that's your, your issue, not mine, that's fine. So some are gone, pretty quick, others have probably been picked up, and others could still be there. Our biggest concern is this, and we relayed this to the state numerous times, don't take young people and put them into a hotel room, don't let them not leave. Like any human being, you're gonna get squirrely, you're gonna start going goofy. So, what hope is, get them acclimated, get them where they're going, don't leave, it's not fair, it's not right to the people. You know, I tell people all the time, they're human beings, they're trying to escape like a lot of people may be, they're human beings like all of us, treat them right. So, we're not sure though, so at the end of the day, we don't know, but I can guarantee you, your safety and everyone else's safety is paramount in our eyes. We're doing everything we can, there's things we've done, we don't talk about, that we'll make sure this community does fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Erin, I live on Wildwood Avenue. We've been here for about a month and a half, I'm sorry, a year and a half, going on two years in January. Unfortunately, there was a billing issue, and Nycor had shut off our gas Tuesday night, so, it's been off. We haven't been able to have gas heat, hot water, the ability to wash ourselves, or cook our own food, except to warm up what we have already cooked in the microwave, nor wash or dry our clothes. When I found out, I made the payment through their online, or whatever, over the phone, or, that night, as soon as I, I'm like, why is there cold air blowing on me? And then, so, I looked and, you know, everything was off, and then that's when I paid it that night. I called in the morning at seven AM, and they said they need an appointment to come out and turn it back on, and some people here may be familiar with this, about the appointment process with Nycor. And so, they originally told me the seventeenth, which was Monday, or which is Monday. And, so I put up a stink, and I told them that was completely unacceptable, I have a senior in the house, a disabled senior, and that, that can't happen. So after finally pushing a little bit, or a lot of it, I got told that I could do a medical certificate, certification, from a doctor. And, anyway, we got that, which was submitted on Wednesday at one-thirty, and I was also told that within twenty-four hours, it would be turned on. They're not gonna turn it on until Friday, and when I asked what time, they said, it's an all-day appointment, meaning that they could come from twelve AM up to Saturday morning at twelve AM, so I'm pretty upset.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you do this?
I don't, I don't know why, excuse me, I don't know why we can't have another gas company as an option. I'm completely disgusted, I'm interested in a class action lawsuit, I went online, I was completely disgusted at the other people who have to go through this as well, with children, we live in Illinois, just because it's not November first, doesn't, doesn't mean that it's not cold.
Ma'am, do this. Come, you're okay, calm down, it's fine, do this. After the meeting, stick around, come up to me, give me your address and all this, and we'll work on this first thing for you, we'll get on the top of this, this should not happen, okay?
I agree.
Okay, we'll work on this for you.
This has to do with health, safety, and welfare, as you just mentioned, and this is not acceptable? And this should be, this, no one should be treated like this, I didn't realize this until I went through this myself. There's tons of reviews online about people suffering like this with Nycor, and their ineptness.
Let us help you, let us work on this for you, so please stick around, come up to me, we'll be done in a few minutes, stick around, and let me see what, we're gonna help you, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, stay around, please.
Alright, thank you.
We've got people that can handle this kind of situation, so, we're gonna make sure we help, don't worry, we'll make sure we help you. Okay, any other, any other questions?
Hello everyone, Jeff Snyder, I think I know most of the village staff here, thanks for letting me speak. First thing, I love the collaborative approach that is started with these town halls, it's, it's awesome, so. A couple of, a couple of things I have on my mind, with the, with the police contract settled, that's, that's very encouraging. One thing I've noticed over the last couple of years, is the equipment our officers use, specifically the squad cars. The old Crown Vics, that have been out of production for eleven years, they're really showing their age. I've, I've followed them where they've had a burned-out brake light, pulled up next to them where they've had dents, paint issues. It, it's, it's just not professional that we let the cars get that old. The old days, we used to replace them like every three years, and the old cars went to the other departments, and apparently that way of doing it has changed. So, I, I think we owe these... So, I, I think we owe these officers, uh, good vehicles. I've even spoken to some officers on the street, and they've acknowledged they're not always reliable cars. Hey, I wanna know that the officer's coming when, when we call him, and he's got the, the best equipment. They're rear-wheel-drive cars. Most of the younger people learned how to drive on front-wheel-drive cars. Um, Trustee Schmidt, you, you relate to this. We, we've seen cases where, when, you know, in other places where they get in pursuit, and they're not used to all that power on the rear wheels, they get in accidents and stuff. So, I, I would encourage you to do that promptly, you know, let's, let's get them-
Mr. Snyder, let me, first, first off, it's insulting that you tell our department that put these cars together, that maintain them, that they were given unsafe cars. Um, Chief Walsh, have any officer ever driven an unsafe car that you're aware of?
No, the fleet, we've done them all the time. Yeah, the issue is- Yeah, the issue is, we're ordering cars. They're just not available with the fleet. Um, I think last budget year, I ordered five. They, they went out to manufacture, and we don't get them until they actually print a VIN number. So, we're on a waiting list like every other, uh, department, fire department. We're struggling to get equipment as well. Uh, we do rotate the cars out about every four years when they hit about a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. And some of the older Fords, we will actually see that those PSOs are driving them as well. But, we've ordered them. We're trying to get them. Uh, but if there's any car that isn't, uh, functional and, and at every shift, an officer's supposed to check the lights and make sure everything's working. Um, and there's twenty-four marked cars, and I think there's only one or two of them that are the older ones that are still serviceable, so, uh, yeah.
And Kobe, is it your department that maintains Fleet Services? Have you guys ever put an unsafe car, ever put any of our staff, whether it's department, with an unsafe car?
Uh, no, sir.
Would you ever picture one of our guys putting a police officer, fireman, all the worst guy, in an unsafe car?
No, sir. As a matter of fact, as the chief said, I think at this time, we only have a few of the old Crown Vics left. Everything's been upgraded to a, uh, Ford Explorer pretty much, so.
And are they checked on a routinely basis for brakes and safety?
Mm-hmm, absolutely, yep.
And Chief Chuck Walsh, do, um, do the officers get trained to drive the Crown Vics as well as other cars?
Yeah, absolutely. At the academy, and then we do, uh, emergency operating course for all of them, so.
So, Mr. Snyder, again, you've insulted the village staff. Um, I take offense to that. Our staff would never put anybody in a car that's unsafe or dangerous. That's insulting. Um, I'd love to get an apology to Kobe, and Kobe will be glad to pass on to the public works fleet staff that maintain those cars. And my understanding is, I don't remember anyone, I've been mayor twenty-six years, having an accident because of a faulty car here in the village. Um, am I wrong on that? I mean, Steve, you ever remember anyone having a faulty car?
I'm gonna tell you something about those Crown Vics, 'cause I was the chief when we ordered the last group. We had those Crown Vics since nineteen ninety-nine. And of all, I've been on the police department forty years. We had Chevys, we had Fords. I'm gonna tell you this, those Crown Vics, they were awesome. They were solid cars. They were probably the best police cars that we ever had. And I know that, I see some of them. I know what you're saying about a little rush there and there. But, and I, and I talked to the chief about it, and the problem is, you can't get cars. But they do a great job here. In fact, our fleet maintenance program here, preventive maintenance program is so good that when we, we didn't keep cars this long, cab companies would actually buy our cars, our old squad cars, because they were in such good shape when they were done. We would put about a hundred, we would trade them at about a hundred twenty-five thousand miles. So, when you think about it, a squad car with a hundred twenty-five thousand miles on it, with the engine time in that, it's about two hundred fifty thousand miles on that car, 'cause there's a lot of idle time when they're at accidents, and they're sitting there, the engines are running, the lights are on and that. But they have a great preventive maintenance program here, and our cars are always well thought of outside when, when the cab companies and other, other parties would buy them after we were done with them.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm sure Kobe waiting for the apology.
So, um, uh, Miss, uh, Kobe, I'm sorry. I, uh, I meant no personal, um, harm. I'm not saying anybody isn't maintaining them to the, to put them on the road safe, okay? It's just a matter of appearance, perception, and, and them being pretty dated. So, again, nothing personal. So, I apologize if I offended anybody, okay? And, you know, just, uh, one more point related to that. I mean, the, the age of the cars, they didn't get to be eleven years old overnight, right? So, I, I realize we got supply chain problems with vehicles now. But, um, you know, the, the problem didn't come up in the last, like, year. It's been brewing for a while.
But again, we keep cars to about a hundred twenty-five thousand miles. As Chief, uh, I'm sorry, Trustee Schmidt now said, Crown Vics were always considered the creme of the creme for, uh, police cars, and they still are good police cars. You see a lot of our detectives and others still using them.
In addition, people who know this, but we had a Fleet Services person here for many years. He was on a committee with Ford, and he helped develop and design police vehicles throughout the entire country. And he's still, he's retired, but he's still active with that, uh, Fleet Association in working to develop good cars for, because, good cars for police services, 'cause these cars are different than the average car you buy. They have to have certain equipment on them because of the severe conditions that officers have to drive those cars in.
And all the equipment, just so folks know, we buy nothing but the best for our employees. We're very proud of it. Uh, any fireman, any policeman will tell you, we buy nothing but the best. Uh, next time, Mr. Snyder, you talk to an officer and tells you something's bad, let us know the officer. We'll get his opinion. If he knows something we don't know, we wanna know it. So, if some officer honestly told you that we give them dangerous car, we'd like to know. I know officers all around, I doubt any off, they're smiling back there. I doubt any officer would ever have said that to you, but that's fine.
The word wasn't dangerous. It was unreliable, meaning-
I don't think, I don't think any officers have said that, but if you do, please let us know, and I'll talk to him directly. I appreciate that. But just so you folks know, we buy the best. Elk Grove's first-class town deserves nothing but the best, and we give them nothing but the best. So, go ahead.
Uh, second question, um, I, I'm sure many of you are aware, we have frequent, uh, cars leaving the road on, uh, Beasterfield west of Rawling, uh, several times a year. Uh, about three weeks ago, we had one, uh, where the road was actually closed for several hours, uh, 'cause it was, you know, wrapped around a tree and, uh, you know, tent over it and everything. And the, the, I, I went over there, 'cause I had to go in the back way to get home. Um, and it, it, they took somebody away. I don't, I don't know their status, but, uh, they, there was no hurry to get the car out of there, which tells me there was some kind of serious investigation. So, you know, while, while we know, we, we sometimes have drunk drivers, we sometimes have people speeding through there. It, it's also the safety of those on the sidewalk. We, we had a car actually flipped over there about three years ago on the opposite side of the road. Uh, we've, we've had cars go through fences regularly, where it, it happens several times a year. So, I, there are several safety enhancements you could make. I, you know, I don't need to tell you what they are. I'm sure that the village engineer knows. There's three or four things that could be done through there. So, I'm asking, what's gonna happen before someone's kid gets hit through, a car going through the fence or someone on the sidewalk?
Well, um, that road, um, I know Jared's here, can tell you, that road more than meets safety requirements. We always exceed safety requirements. The accident you're talking about with the blue tent, that was a drunk driver. Uh, most accidents, you may assume things, and also you know what they mean when you say you assume something. I won't say the phrase. Um, but, um, many times, there's more behind it than you know. That one you're talking about in particular, drunk driver. No matter what kind of road you have, a drunk driver's gonna do stupid things, and stupid things happen. We have not had any kind of dangerous situation there. We have no accidents that required anything that's different with the engineering. The engineer of the road meets all standards, exceeds standards. And again, we've not seen an issue, problem like you had. In areas we think might be a risk, we put up safeguard, guardrails, and they've been very successful. Um, I don't think we have any unusual data for-
Now, we've, uh, we've also increased some enforcement there with the overweight trucks. We've had, uh, some complaints at the department, so we've, uh, done more. And then, there's some, uh, pages out there for like, uh, speed traps. Not that it's a speed trap, but if you Google it, Elk Grove on Beasterfield Road there, uh, we're known for sitting out there and writing tickets, especially 'cause it's a school zone. So, we're always out there, so.
We're on top of things. We're safe, and Beaster, I mean, unfortunately, accidents happen, folks. They do happen. But, yeah, Beasterfield Road's in good shape. I would not hesitate to drive it. I drive it almost every day. It's perfectly fine. And we are very careful. It's all engineered. Jared, am I incorrect on anything with the road design? You're, you're an engineer, Jared? Yeah? Trade safety issue? No? Okay. Now, maybe, Mr. Snyder, you're an engineer. Are you road engineer?
Well, I, I'm not, but I am a quality and safety professional with my company.
With roads? You work on roads design?
I, I work on all aspects. You have parking lot safety with vehicles. I, I deal with it.
Roads, like Beasterfield, you design or work on safety on roads?
I'm not giving you an, an engineering, um, opinion here. I'm giving you a general safety, which is, we strive for zero accidents through corrective action, and not only meeting the standard, but exceeding the standard into best practice or taking it to the highest level of excellence, like the airline industry does with zero deaths last year. Their, their diligence has got to the point where nobody died in an aircraft, commercial aircraft, the entire year last year. We can do that with our roads and highways through continuous improvement, tweaking the programs, and making the road better. When you go through that section of road with the, the less-than-ideal lanes, they may meet standard. If you're next to a school bus, the school bus on the curve goes over the white line into the next lane. So, that could force someone over on the edge. They hit the curb, and all of a sudden, they're off the road. So, it's, it's just not an ideal design to the level it could be. It may be perfectly legal, meets federal and state design, but it's not excellence. That, that's my point. We can, we can do better.
Chief, he's been chief, he's been police, how long you been police officer here?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years. He's never remembered an accident with a bus. He had an accident with a car in thirty-two years. Now, it was a one-lane road for a while. Now, it's a two-lane road. So, I mean, you know, it's your perception. And the problem with perceptions, they can be incorrect. Uh, we're always on top of safety. Every year, the police gets all records of every accident in Elk Grove. They look for a trend. They look for a problem. They look for something that we should be aware of. Um, Beasterfield Road's checked, just like Rawling, just like Briarwood Lane, just like Love Street. They all get checked every year. And there's been absolutely nothing there. There weren't any kind of difference. Again, we can't control drunk drivers. They occur everywhere. You can have the most safest car or street in the world, a drunk driver's gonna have an accident. Unfortunately, that happens. But, um, Beasterfield's been fine. It's been by Link's School. For how long has Link's School been there? Forty years?
Yeah, right.
Forty years? Um, there's been no issues. Um, can't say it never happened. And an accident car could fly through here one day. We don't know. But, we're on top of things.
The accidents are typically at the east end of the road, not near the school, they're where the two curves are, and-
But again, Mr. Snyder, you're just making things up. You don't have statistics. Do you have the statistics?
A, a, I, I witnessed a car flipped upside down in the oncoming lanes.
And I was, and I was there playing Crash in nineteen seventy-nine over by the trailer park. But that doesn't make me an expert on crashes or information like that. We all unfortunately see accidents. The accident you saw with the blue tarp, that was a drunk driver. We just told you. That happens. But again, you throw things out. You need to give us some statistical data to back up what you're saying, you know? The other day, you said that we don't have a one-point-five-four percent vacancy rate. You said it's ten percent industrial park. What information do you have that Colliers, the biggest developer of real estate almost in the world, they're the ones that tell us these numbers? I wanna know what background information you have to say that they're lying to us. We need to know that stuff. If you know something's wrong with Beasterfield, and you got stats or proof to show it, let us know. If you're just guessing, just to make the village look bad, that's wrong. So, let us know if you give us real information, real data. More than half the chiefs will look at it. Wherever engineers look at it, we'll be more apt to address it. Otherwise, don't make things up. Tell people the truth. Don't just pull it out of you-know-what. That doesn't do any service.
Okay, one last, uh, one, one last point, then I'll be, um, out of the way here. Um, there, there's been continual discussion about the red light cameras and the people that don't like the, uh, the red light cameras. Um, did a little investigation, and I do have a little facts on, on this. Last night, I was out, uh, doing some timing at the intersections. Um, so, the, the, the federal standard for yellow lights is three to six seconds. They give a little bit of leeway there. Um, it seems in Illinois and Cook County, the best practice is a four-second yellow, and that's what our brains are trained through our years of driving to expect, okay? So, I went to, I, I received a ticket, not in Elk Grove, another town, about twelve years ago. Not for not stopping on right, you know, before the white line, the usual stuff. But, uh, for, for as the, the, the arrow ended, uh, going through the light, just after the yellow arrow, arrow ended. So, so I went out last night, and I, I timed the, uh, the yellow lights at, at about eight intersections where we have the red light cameras in, in Elk Grove Village on my, uh, iPhone timer. So, um, what I found, all except for one, the, the straight-ahead yellow light is four seconds, the best practice. But the right arrow yellow light is running three seconds. So, so we have a little bit of a, 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 a confusion there when you're expecting a four-second yellow. All of our intersections with red light cameras have dedicated right-turn lanes, where a right turner is, is moving along at ten or twenty miles an hour. He has a green arrow. He approaches, it turns yellow, but he only has three seconds instead of four. So, somebody pulling up to that, that line at the three-second mark, and the light changes just before he gets to the line, 'cause the yellow arrow is shortened, then would get a red light ticket. So, you know, it's, it's one of the little, the little scenarios on those that, that people don't feel good about. All the little loopholes that, that trick people into getting paid those, uh, getting those hundred-dollar fines. So, um, I just wanted to point that out. That's another thing that has not been brought up, is you have short yellows. With the only exception being, at, uh, Beasterfield, heading east to get on eastbound two ninety, that particular red light right-turn yellow arrow is four seconds. But that's a unique intersection, because there's no cross-traffic there. But the rest of them have the one second shorter, which could potentially write another red light ticket every stoplight cycle, so.
So, you just stated that it's supposed to be three to six seconds. That's the law?
That's the right-
And you say it's within the law?
It's within the law.
Okay, so we're within the law. So, our problem is, we're within the law. That's bad? You want us to be out of the law? I'm trying to figure out where-
Because there's an inconsistency there that doesn't play with our creature of habit, expecting a four-second yellow.
You tell me, as you drive, you can tell just between three and four seconds. A second's this. You can tell the difference on that?
Mayor Johnson, I wouldn't come here without some basis on that. I, I went out last night and timed lights at eight intersection-
But you just told me our lights are within the law.
They are, but doesn't, that doesn't make them the best possible scenario. Our, 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 our saying is, our slogan is the exceptional community. Exceptional to me means excellent, means you do it the best you can so that everybody wins. Not so that the village generates another hundred dollars every stoplight-
The village is not doing this for anything but safety of people in this community. Now, if you're approaching a red light and it turns yellow, you're not supposed to speed up to get through it, Mr. Snyder. You're supposed to slow down and stop. It gives you a warning, the light's gonna turn. Obviously, you wanna speed up and get through it. That's your prerogative. You make it safely, fine. If not, then you get the ticket like you got one before you said. Remember this, red light cameras are here for one reason, one reason only. And that is to protect this community and the people in it. We set the standard for red light cameras. Matter of fact, the state of Illinois law, that they put in, the new law for red light cameras, they call the Elk Grove Village Law. Because we did it right. Real quick, folks, explain again. Red light cameras are new technology back in about two thousand six, two thousand seven. Officers cannot sit at every corner at every street. It's impossible. Due to the businesses there, that there's no businesses, nowhere to sit, nowhere to park the car. So, they came out with red light cameras. So, red light cams we put in, we put them in the top ten accident locations in the village. We took the ten worst intersections. As Mr. Snyder's worried about accidents, this is a way to avoid accidents. We put them in to make it safer. And so, we put them throughout the village, and in two thousand nine, we said, "Hey, you know what? We noticed the accidents are dropping down. Maybe people changed their driving habits. Maybe they're driving safer." They did their job. They taught them to be safer drivers, 'cause most people drive the same route every day of the year. So, predominantly, the cars go into most intersections. They do it all the time. So, they know, "Oh, red light camera, I better slow down. They're watching. We'll move." So, in two thousand nine, we did a state-of-the-art study that was followed by IDOT, Illinois Department of Transportation, State Police, everyone. They monitored what we did. Our study is actually used nationwide, because we did for the first time a true test. Did driving habits change by having red light cameras, or do they still drive poorly? So, at the intersection of Devon and Bussy, we took our cameras out. Devon and Bussy was the number-two accident intersection in the village. It dropped to like thirty-three with the cameras. That's phenomenal. So, I talked to, uh, Trustee Schmidt a minute, 'cause he was the chief at the time. And so, we took them all out, took the cameras out, took out the signage, and went back to the old-fashioned intersection with no red light cameras. And we said, "We're gonna do a one-year study." The board there is here, remember this. We're gonna do a one-year study to see what happens. And if, during that year, accidents stay down, it stays, it may not be thirty-third best, it might be twenty-fifth, but if it stays down like that, we're gonna remove cameras throughout the village. They're gonna come out. We didn't use the cameras to make money. We use the cameras for safety. That's why the money from the cameras go to mostly one-time uses. Projects, you know, I think you used some maybe for the memorial park, the memorial park, Veterans Park we're doing. We use that money. We didn't wanna come reliant on that money like so many governments do. Chicago, every time they have a shortfall, they said, "Put up a speed camera. Put up a red light camera." They use it to live on. We don't do that. So, we take it out. About six months after we took it out, at the time, Chief Walsh, you know, he said, "Mayor, we have a problem." I said, "What's the problem?" He goes, "The intersection of Devon and Bussy?" I said, "Yeah." "Well, I hate to tell you, but it went from number thirty-three to number one in accidents in six months." Number one. And he's right. He goes, "Do you really wanna wait a year?" And he's right, he goes, you really wanna wait a year? I can't sleep with my conscious knowing, we could do something to make it safer and allow people to get injured, if not, maybe killed. The reason we put in the first red light cameras at Oakton and Higgins and Bussy was 'cause a mother and daughter were killed when a right-turn driver ran a red light. Killed them. We all learned that, that's what we said, that's it. So, he was right. We put the cameras back up. Put them up, within, it took us about a month or two to put them up, got the signs up, went from number one down to number eighteen overnight, just like that. Cameras work. Cameras work. And nothing special. My kids have all gotten tickets. I remember my son was in college, came home, said, Dad, I got a red light. I said, okay, goes, can you help me? I said, yeah, we'll take care of it right now. Really? I said, sure. I said, where's your checkbook? True story, wrote a check, sent it in. My daughter's gotten, I won't tell which one, um, several. And every time, I said, well, one of these days you're either gonna go broke, or you're gonna learn to follow the law. So, in Elk Grove, the red light cam worked. How the law become Elk Grove Law was this way. Remember Schaumburg put them in before even Elk Grove did? The problem Schaumburg has, every ticket that came in, they sent out. So if a guy pulled up and stopped two inches past the white line, he got a ticket, they sent it out. If it's snowing out, raining out, you got a ticket. If they pulled up behind the white line, then pulled up, and then pulled up, and considered he ran a driving, they got a ticket. I mean, they ticketed everything. We didn't do that. What we did was unique. First off, the red light company reviews them first, then they send them to our police department. What we did from day one was, we assigned a police officer to sit there and go through every single red light ticket, every one. And his job is, you're sitting in a squad car, watching the intersection, chief knows, what would you do if you're there working? You issue a ticket based on what you do. We throw out at least sixty percent of our tickets we get from the red light company. Sixty percent. Because we wanna treat you fairly. So Springfield saw what we were doing, so they changed law. Now, by Illinois law, you can't stop a few inches past the white line. You can make some other modifications, that happens normal driving, as long as the true issue of stopping is still fulfilled. And that's why they called the Elk Grove Law, and it's been highly successful since then. But yeah, we treat it right. I can tell you, we can count almost on one hand how many people go to adjudication to fight it. You know, if you wanna fight the ticket, you can, but I, and I've been there, I've watched it, the adjudicator was like the acting judge, well, let's watch it on screen. And you watch it, the car pulls up, lights never turn red, never slows down, goes right through. And the judge, you look at the person, are you sure you wanna fight this ticket? No, Your Honor, you're right, sorry, here's the check. I mean, I mean, we go through it. Now, once we're onto the adjudicator's credit, it's kinda close, they'll say, you know what? I'll give you a break today. He's very fair, the guy we have, Tom Bastian, right? Tom Bastian's been doing it for years. But for the most part, people don't come, because you can go online, see what you do. I've done it with my kids, and I look at it, I go, are you serious? No, Dad, you're right, sorry. You know, so, again, we believe in them, they're done right, they're done the way they should be. We follow the laws in everything we do with it. So, Mr. Snyder just admitted, we're between the state law, three to six seconds. You know, wow, maybe we'll go out and check, see if he's right about three seconds or four. Remember, the difference between three and four seconds, there you go. If that's that big of a difference driving, I'd find it amazing, but it could be. All I know is when I see a yellow light, I slow down. I don't hit the gas, I slow down, 'cause he's exactly right. You don't wanna hit someone, you don't hit a kid, you don't wanna hit someone in front of you, you wanna be safe. You know, and that's the way you should do it.
I, I don't have a problem with the cameras where they're, where they're justified through data, so, so no issue there. Um, I, I, I just have one, one last point related to the cameras. I do find a little bit of irony in the fact that Elk Grove Village chose not to accept the money from the Displanes Casino thing due to the corruption, but yet we accept the money from the red light cameras with all the corruption that's gone on with the red light companies, not in Elk Grove, and other communities, though. It, there is a connection to, to bribery and corruption. It, it has a bad image, that's all I'm saying, and it ties you to a bad image.
The red light camera company that does Elk Grove is called Redspeed. They have never been implicated, never been discussed, never been even thought of doing anything wrong. So, don't go there on that, they, they do completely correct. I do not remember, maybe the other board members remember? I don't ever remember us saying, we didn't want money from the casino, 'cause it's corrupt.
If you're listening, we'll take the money.
Yeah.
I've never heard of that.
Yeah, that one, that's news to me.
It's all new.
It was discussed at some meetings here, a long time ago.
Not at our meetings.
I don't think, uh, Mr. Franky was on the board then, but it was a long time ago.
No, we were.
He would've been there.
Well, I, I could be, you know what, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't remember that, but Justice Proctor, you remember us saying, turn it down, because it was corruption?
I don't think we were offered it.
We were never offered it, Craig, I've been here for a lot of years.
For corruption? Why did we turn it down? Was it corruption?
I, I think it was, it was tied to organized crime or something to that effect, so, I re- you have a good memory, Nancy.
Then we got, we got, we got rid of, we got rid of that concern with, we have those in the village.
As long as I've been here, we haven't had it.
Okay. Again, thank you for the opportunity to talk. Again, I love the collaborative approach, so, so keep that up, and keep the resident focus on, I, I see it starting to come out, more resident focus, 'cause you're, you're here to serve the residents and business owners, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else tonight? Yes, please, come on down.
I don't remember anything like this.
Nancy's the only one. We're gonna have to find the minutes.
Jim McGala, and I've been here about twenty-six years.
Thank you.
Um, what's going on by the bowling alley? I know, no, 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 don't get me wrong, I heard that the strip mall's coming out, and I just got an email from Seven Cycles that says, they're not gonna remodel our building, we're not moving anywhere.
Okay, what's, keep this date open. Wednesday, November ninth, from six PM to eight PM at the pavilion across the street, we're gonna have an open house. And in there will be all the proposals coming to us to redevelop that corner. Remember, we told you, back in September first, we put out a request for proposal, and that's for any developer that wants to come there and redevelop that corner.
Right.
Um, and there's some parameters, though. We wanna save the businesses that are there. Uh, Tensuki, Village Cycle can go, we don't, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. Village Cycle, uh, Seven Mile, Seven Mile Cycle, uh, Jiraj Bakery, I mean, we hear of Jiraj, we're all gonna be hung from a light pole. Um, Vivi Nails, um, Vinnie's Pizza, we wanna see the business stay. The reason we wanna see the business stay is, you see how many vacant shopping centers exist in this world today?
Yeah.
Well, why would we wanna throw out businesses that have been there sixty-five years, or sixty-two years, whatever, and throw them out? Vince, how many years you been at your shop there? Thirty-five years. Tensuki, why we don't get rid of businesses that are successful at that location? We don't want to. So, what's gonna happen is, they're gonna come in with the vision of what they wanna do there. We had nine companies approach us, we're hoping to get six to seven proposals. Now, we'll tell you now, if someone comes in with a ninety-five-story building, we're not gonna show you that, 'cause that'd be tossed right away. But we're gonna show you all the proposals that makes sense there, and you're gonna be able to come, look at them, give input. Say, hey, Craig, this sucks, we don't want that, okay, thank you. Hey, we love this one, okay, thank you. Hey, Craig, do you ever think about moving this a little bit over here? We wanna hear your input. As we've told you, this is a village project. We've been very open and honest about this whole thing. So that's gonna happen. What we expect to see done is this, we moved, we're gonna move, uh, Rose Garden Cafe down to Street Baby Ray's. One of the biggest things we knew right from the beginning, was in order to build this in phases, we couldn't tell all those businesses on the strip, hey, you're gonna shut down for two years, while we tear everything down and build you a new place to put your business. They'd be out of business. We know that, you can't do that to a business. So we had to find a way to put it in two phases. Phase one is to build a new retail outlet, the shopping center, you know, where they're gonna be. Phase two will be the housing component. So, we knew the new retail would have to go along Higgins Road. Well, we bought the gas station, you saw the fence up there, that should be torn down, and the air future, what's slowing that down again, Matt? The gas station coming down. Oh, the environmental fence, that. Uh, we think we're in good shape, because they've had the tanks replaced already, not long ago, so we might be, we gotta do the environment, that'll be torn down. Then, Rose Garden, we need that, we need that whole strip on Higgins, to be able to build a new retail, and have parking, and still leave the existing businesses going. They don't shop, stop. So, that's why we were looking ways to work it out. And some people said, whoa, why'd you, um, give money, why'd you buy all this? Well, one, we have dollars available through the Tiff District. That's money that comes from the taxpayers in the business park, that can be used for improvements in that location. So we're able, Street Baby Ray's, luckily, went up for sale, for sale for a year, couldn't sell it, we sat down with Tim the owner, Tim Forever, we cut a deal, it was very fair with us, we bought it. And then, because we may have businesses get out of the contracts early, if they're leaving, we owe them money. So Rose Garden's getting out of the contract early. We also owe certain money, if we get them out of the contract and move them out, or throw them out, we're not throwing, but ask them to leave, we owe them some cost for moving, all the rest with it. So we found it more cost-effective to move them down to a new location. Secondly, we don't have many restaurants like Rose Garden in this village. The one thing people complain to us about all the time is, Mayor, we want more restaurants, restaurant, restaurants. Rose Garden's probably the only one in the village that is all-day, breakfast, lunch, dinner, family-style restaurant, we have, the last one we have. So, we wanna keep that for the community's benefit, you know, they use it a lot. So, it worked out beautiful. Chris and Alex, the owners, are in heaven, moving down there. I showed you all the drawing, if you haven't seen it, go to the, they have it hanging up in the restaurant, gorgeous what they're gonna do with Street Baby Ray's. Uh, they're gonna redo it all, do that, move down there, they're gonna tear that down, build a new retail area there, then when they get done building it, if they want to, if they can move, if Vince can move fast enough, he can close Saturday night, move it, new place Sunday, open up Monday morning. A nice new location. So that works out beautiful that way. Then they're gonna build the housing component. What we envision is backing up to the homes on Forest and Edgewood will be row homes. There'll be rental row homes, not for sale, rental. And then, up toward our, tonight's road, will be a multi-story apartment complex. We envision all the parking being either on the inside of it or underneath it, we leave the non-parking unit on the outside, so it fits in nicer, and that's what we envision component. We want the row homes to be a buffer from the homes that back up there on Forest and Edgewood, so they see, oh, like row homes behind them, before that big apartment building in front of that. So that's our vision. Now, I tell you all this, I tell people watching TV, if these developers come back with a better idea, we're looking forward to that. I'm not a developer, no one up here are developers. So we'd love if they got some, hey, Mayor, here's a better way to lay it out, it works more efficiently, you can transition, great, we'll jump on it. So that's what we're looking forward to seeing and excited. And people ask me, I'll be honest with everyone right now, people say, well, Mayor, what happens if nothing comes? Nothing works? Well, nothing prohibits us from selling the bowling alley piece of land for another potential use, updating the strip shop instead of the parking lot and all that, we could potentially sell it to another strip shop instead of owner. It may stay like it is. I don't know, we don't know. But, come on November ninth, please, come see it. I'm gonna be honest, too, we're gonna show the store owners the visions first, 'cause we promised them we would. They're the ones most impacted. But all the rest get a chance to see it. No decision's gonna be made, probably till December, if we're lucky, more likely January. So, don't worry, if you didn't see it right away, we'll have the plans in the newsletter, our website, you'll be able to see it. Give us your input. It'll be a couple months till we make a decision. But this is a community project. No one, I know no other mayor, they laugh when I tell them what we're doing. Why you do that, Craig? You just get a design and do it. I said, no, we want the community's involvement, we want your input, we want your ideas. That's what we look for, that's the way it should be. And remember, that is our gateway to our village. That corner has been from the beginning of the village to now, the gateway. Ninety comes that way, fifty-three, two ninety comes off Higgins, goes to our new tech park, all that new development on Higgins, down by Bussy and Higgins, and Oakton, that's our gateway. We wanna make a gateway that we all gonna be proud of. So we're doing that. And again, we worked with Rose Garden to make them happen. Rose Garden's gotta keep open like they are for five years. They don't stay open five years, they don't get the land and the building. They put all that investment into it, fix it all up, we get to keep it. They stay five years longer, then it's theirs, and it's a fair thing to do with them. So, that we worked out with them, we think that's more than fair, 'cause without them making this decision to move, we're really hamstrung on what we could do, or it's gonna cost us a hell of a lot of money. And we'd rather work with them than fight with them. And I give Chris and Alex so much credit, even if you folk, I don't allow you folks go to Rose Garden, they're good people there, they really are. And it'd be nice to have a, even Chris and Alex said, it's gonna be nice to have new, new surroundings, they want it too. So it'd be nice for everyone, new furniture, new everything, so. Okay, did I answer?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
I know where to look now, too.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh-oh.
You didn't raise your hand.
Who are you?
Nancy Zarnik, um, longtime Village resident.
Not quite that long, but pretty long.
No, 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 pretty long, well, maybe not as long as one, two, three people, but...
You're a rookie, it's okay.
Okay, about that money, I just, the memory takes a little while to, you know, work up again. Uh, we did vote to not take it, because parameters were put on, on what we could do and how...
You could spend it.
We could use it.
Yes.
And that was why we voted against it.
It was not gangster.
Had nothing to do with the red light cameras, that came way after...
Well, he said, because of the gangsters, I'm after it.
No, 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 it was, there were parameters put upon it as to what we could do, you know, what we could do with it, and we thought, no, if we're gonna take it...
Do you remember when it was?
No. Give me time, give me a couple more days, then it comes in, you know?
Before we were on the board?
What?
Was it before we were on the board?
Oh, before you were on the board.
No, we were on the board.
We were on the board.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you were, yeah.
I know it wasn't tied to any kind of, uh...
We were there, I know.
I know it wasn't tied to organized crime, that we never heard, nothing like that.
No, that had nothing to do with it, no. But it was, they gave parameters, and, and something, kinda remember something to do with the airport.
Probably did.
Yeah, there was, there was little, uh, nuances that, uh, we did not want to accept. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay.
Um, hang on, sir, hang on, right, someone new before, gentlemen's got another question before? Anything new?
Somebody in the.
Come on back, come on, sir. You should've sat closer than a short walk for you back and.
He's brave, he's got shorts on.
Hey, if you don't mind, hang on a second. Anybody cheating and looking at the Bears game, just curious?
Three, nothing.
Three to nothing halftime.
Halftime, okay, who?
Not the Bears.
Not the Bears.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to ask Chief Walsh something about that, uh, you know, trespassing thing that somebody brought up.
Yes, sir.
Is, so you're saying like, effective January first, it will be handled differently than now?
Right, right now, we can, uh, we can remove them ourselves.
Without a complaint?
Without, without a complaint. And then, and now after January one, we need you to sign the complaint.
Okay.
To, to go to court so that we can physically remove them.
But do you find a lot of people come home, or find somebody sitting in their garage and are not willing to file a complaint?
Be surprised.
Yeah.
Be surprised who don't wanna get involved and go to court and do all that stuff.
But before that, first off, do we have a lot of people in people's garages?
No, no, you, what you'll find out.
Well, you go in, we don't catch them.
You know, even on your property.
Yeah, they're usually sitting in the restaurants, the McDonald's and stuff, and they'll ask us to come over there. This guy's been sitting in the bathroom for four hours, and, you know, that's what we get involved in, but not private residents, uh, where we have that issue.
Okay, so you're saying after, after January first, you'll have to file a complaint?
You'll have to find a complaint. Uh, we can also write them a ticket so that, you know, hey.
But they could stay.
But they could be standing there, and, uh, we can't forcibly remove them unless there's a complaint signed.
I, I just thought it would be unusual for someone to be on your property and you just say, yeah, I'm not, I'm, that's fine.
Hey, Rick?
I called the police, but I'm not, I'm not.
Let's be honest, let's be honest, Rick. If some guy sits in my garage, and I don't know him, and I tell him, get the hell out of there, he doesn't, I'm not calling the police, I'll take care of it. He'll be out, he'll be out.
Wait, wait, I thought you said, don't approach these people before.
If you, now, if he's stealing my Cadillac converter, I won't approach him. But some guys just sit in my lawn chair, my garage, maybe soaked in scar, and I don't know him, and I ask him, he doesn't leave, he'll be leaving.
And, and he's not saying violence or anything, he's just gonna talk to him, and then make sure that person runs away.
Just fire up the chainsaw, right?
There's a reason why I've been a wrestler for fifty years, so, I'm not worried. Okay, any other questions? Well, folks, I wanna thank you.
What?
Oh, yes, by all means.
Second question.
Everybody loves White Castle, um, I'm just kinda disappointed that White, White Castle closed. Um, what is the villagers' board doing in terms of, uh, making the development at the Bussy corridor, um, faster? Instead of having some businesses like White Castle seeing the development kinda slow down and think otherwise, you know, moving out of the village?
What do you mean was going slow? Um, some of the developments we're putting in, uh, for example, the tech park, they estimated it would've been vacant. There's people in this room that said it's gonna be vacant for five years or longer, it was filled in less than two years. So, we're moving it very fast, the new prime development, I'm sorry, man, the prime development coming up at Bussy and Oakton, that thing's flying along, cuz originally that was gonna be hotels, then in pandemic, hotels went away, and now we're building a million square foot, well, state of the art theater center, excuse me, along with a new substation from ComEd. That's going like that. So, we're moving very quickly. It's not easy sometimes, because a lot of developments interact with other developments. So we had to put in like a puzzle, piece at a time. So, but no, that's working well. No one's more upset about White Castle leaving than me. Um, when I was the wrestling coach at the high school, we won, I take my wrestling to White Castle. That was a treat, I love White Castle. So no one wanted to leave more, I want them to stay, excuse me. So, very disappointed in that happening. But again, it's a corporate decision, it's a different world, people buy differently and all that. But no, we're on top of things, we're working very quickly, large developments. Matter of fact, we got a big, huge manufacturer that's gonna locate, we just met today, the board approved the plans. Big new manufacturer, gonna build a new state of the art, their headquarters here in Elk Grove, it'll be announced by the next month or two, we're excited about that. And we're, we're moving at the next speed. Our biggest problem in Elk Grove is honestly, we didn't have enough land. People, people are begging to find places in Elk Grove, and that's why we get property, we tear them down, and we let them come build new state of the art developments. So, but, we're moving along very good. But yes, I'm disappointed in White Castle also.
Uh, my other question was about the, uh, Elk Grove Township Fire Department possibly being dissolved. I know it's on their call to do so. Um, that means the Elk Grove would be interested in absorbing some of the township, just like Mount Prospect would.
And Displanes.
The fire, fire department's great. Um, I'm just asking about costs and our resources so it does not be drained in some aspect. So there's not, you know, we're not going over there, and then we're focused on another call over there, and some of the resources are flipped back and forth and just using it, um, to the best extent the village can.
Well, our fire chief has worked extensively on this, Mr. Rollins worked extensively, Displanes and Mount Prospect were all working in consortium. What he's talking about is, is less than, less than incorporated lanes available, the tax revenue for the unincorporated Elk Grove Township Fire Department has been shrinking dramatically. They've been running deficits for how many years now? Yeah, quite a while, they've been running deficits, so all the reserves are slowly going away. Very shortly, they're gonna be bankrupt. Now, we take very seriously the health and safety of everyone, if someone needs it. So what we've offered is that Mount Prospect, Displanes, Elk Grove would take over the fire district. We would handle it. Chief has done a great analysis of how many calls for our section, we're gonna divide up by sections closest to the village. Now, just so you know, we back them up now. If Elk Grove Township Fire Department's on another call, they only have one ambulance. If they're out somewhere else, we make the calls already. And we get several calls a year, we do it now. We would take it over full time. So Chief has done analysis on how many calls they get a year, how much it costs, and then what revenue we get. Cuz the revenue that's still left going to the township would then be divided amongst all of our towns, correct? So, we know now, as we speak now, the way it's operating, we will make, we will have more money coming in than the expense we have to take care of that area. We don't have to add any new ambulances, no manpower. We can empower their existing equipment and not affect, again, not affect Elk Grove as exists today. The reason we wanna do this is, if we don't do this, the state will come in and force some kind of gerrymandered arrangement that probably wouldn't be good for the village, or Mount Prospect, or Displanes. So we'd rather drive the cart than ride in the back of it. So, we've been working on this now for how long, a year, year and a half? At least a year plus, try and get this worked out. And again, it won't affect anyone, we've checked the numbers, thank you for being concerned, we are too, that's good thinking on your part, thank you. Um, so, we've gone through all the analysis, it'll be good. And actually, it'll be good for the residents that live there, cuz we have, as I told you before, we have the best equipment. I'm not saying township's bad, but I'm just saying, we've got the best. So we're getting the best equipment, best service to help them.
To be honest, I've told people where the Township Fire Department is, and they have no clue. So it's like, you know, um, even more communication in terms of the zoning and the particular districts that we will be, um, handling would be great to know, if, you know, once we know that, if they dissolve, which would be on them. Um, also had one other quick concern was the flower beds. The new flower beds on Arden Heights Road, um, they're kinda like weeds right now per se.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, is that really necessary because it's a little bit tight? I've, I've seen it, before, before it was put in, I understand like certain areas of village would need that beautification, but is that really necessary at that, um, area of the, the road?
The, go ahead.
So, so in that area, when they have the raised median, it's there because county's requiring it because there's too many full access turns, uh, too close together, so that's why county is requiring the raised median so that you can't drive through. Um, it's more of a safety issue from traffic standpoint.
So it's more of an issue?
It's a county issue, county required it when we got the grant to, uh, do the improvements on Arlington Heights Road.
Just with the construction with the, the beds and stuff like now, right now it's a little tight, and then when winter comes, you know, it's gonna be a bit more tighter, and people just gotta get used to it, uh, before winter comes, it's just observation on my end.
Well, believe it or not, people may not realize this, those lanes aren't, aren't narrower than they were before. If you notice, we didn't have to widen the street. If you go, well, how'd you get that extra middle lane for turning? There was enough land, area in the middle, and the lanes were wider than usual, they were what, twelve feet? And now we're going down to eleven?
We're gonna have one eleven-foot lane and one ten-foot lane.
And before they were both twelve foot?
They were over twelve feet.
Yeah, so we're able to use that, plus the middle lot, land in between. Ten feet for the speed on there and stuff, more than fine, ten-foot lanes are fine. And so, that's how we got it done. And again, that's not our road, that's Cook County, but we've wanted that work done for decades. I mean, just going by Tapapa there, I mean, we needed a left turn lane there forever, um, down by the funeral home, we've needed one forever. Now we're gonna have it. Uh, the new owners of the funeral home, I was there for a funeral a couple weeks ago, thanked me. Mayor, that turn lane's staying, right? I said, yes, you have a turn lane. Thank you, thank you, we've wanted this forever. And so, it's being done, but I do thank the county. They gave us almost six million dollars to do that project. And that's cuz we worked with them well during the pandemic, they wanna thank us and work, partner with us. So we're finally getting that done, we're putting about, what, a million and a half? Million eight? Yeah, about a million and a half dollars is our part, almost six million is the county's part. So, we're as excited as could be about that, the sidewalks are wider, they're safer, the crosswalks, everything, it's ADA accessible. Thank you, we're happy. So, that's happening there.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, board.
Now, Mr. Urban brought up a good point, though. You're gonna see more, just keep your eyes open, if we do more road projects or this, you're gonna see more islands that do have landscaping. It's a way to soften the impact of roads, way to soften everything around, give a little more neighborhood residential feel. Especially ones that have butt against residential areas. Rowling Road, look how nice that looks with all that landscape we put on there, you know, from Beasterfield down to Nergi. It just makes it nicer, better for the community, makes it more welcoming. We're working hard on the welcoming part, make you feel good when they're at Elk Grove. So, we're working on all that. Anything else? Again, thank you, two hours, ideal, thank you for your concern, thank you for wanting to be part of the community, thank you for reaching out, and don't stop tonight. Any one of us can be reached all the time. Give us a call, email to the village, I know you may not write down quick, but if you want my number, eight four seven four three seven eight two two six, you get it all the time.[1740.13]